I want to call to order the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for the City of Imperial for Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty. Roll call of officers.
Commissioner Correio.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales Trujillo.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Winkler.
Present.
And Commissioner Obadi and Chairperson Rivera are absent for the record.
Puntja, will you lead us in our.
Ready to begin. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America.
So I wanted to just take a second to welcome our newest Commissioner. Didiana Rosales Trujillo.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm excited to have met you guys and can't wait to meet the rest of of the team. And I'm just very thankful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. You're welcome. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no adjustments this evening.
Oh, thank you. Okie doke, so is there any public appearances? Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the Commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the Chairperson, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The Chairperson reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the Commission in writing. Was there any emails or anything?
No via email.
Awesome. So we'll continue with item C, the Consent Calendar. Approval of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get on motion or?
You can vote together if you would like on both sets of minutes.
Okay.
In one motion.
So we'll do C one, the min- the mini minutes from May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and C two, the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve uh the meeting minutes for C one and C two.
I go ahead and second that.
Want to call for a vote?
Motion carries three zero.
Perfect. We'll move on to item D, Planning Commission New Business Discussion Action Recommend/Deny. D one, Environmental Justice Element Presentation by Hannah, Program Manager of the Institute for Local Government. Hannah, would you like, is Hannah checking us online or?
I I am online, can you hear me?
Yeah, forget.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Hannah Stolmakovich. I'm the Program Manager at the Institute for Local Government, and I'm here today to present about the Environmental Justice Element Development Project and share about the project's components, including public engagement, timelines, and next steps. Next slide, please. So this is the face behind the voice. This is me, Hannah, I'm the Program Manager at the Institute for Local Government. Let me share a few sentences about our organization so you know who we are. Next slide, please. So Institute for Local Government, or ILG, is a nonprofit, nonpartisan statewide organization. We're a training and education affiliate of three statewide local associations, CAL-CITIES, California Special District Association, and California State Association of Counties. Together with our affiliates, we serve cities, counties, and special districts, and we provide practical and easy-to-use resources for local governments so that agencies can effectively implement policies on the ground. I'm personally working in public engagement program in the past nine years, but we also have sustainability program, workforce development, and leadership and governance program. Next slide, please. Okay, so in addition to our main programs or pillars areas, we also have various pilot programs that when we partner with local governments. One of the pilot programs, not pilot, it's actual actual program nowadays, it's a boost program. It's our third round of flexible technical assistance program. And we work with seven cities in Imperial County and Imperial County itself. And the City of Imperial is one of our, what we call, boost cities. The boost program, um, it's a flexible technical assistance program. We provide grant writing assistance, project development assistance for those grants. We connect cities to exist existing state technical assistance programs. We help and facilitate partnerships buildings on uh local, regional, and state levels. We're doing, we do trainings, uh, public engagement training, grant writing, leadership and governance trainings. We provide peer-to-peer learning opportunities, uh, communication support to promote success of our boost participants. And we also assist with planning, including climate resilience and environmental justice element. So with this connection, next slide, please. That's how we connected to the City of Imperial through the boost program and uh through our assistance in uh planning efforts, which is environmental justice element is one of those efforts. What you can see on the screen is uh partners or involved parties on this environmental justice element development project. Besides Institute for Local Government and you guys, the City of Imperial, we're also working with our consultant, uh, Ascent. It is environmental and planning and design firm that is actually uh involved in the writing of actual document, actual element. So this is a little bit about background, about me, about our organization, services that we provide, and how we're connected to the City of Imperial into the environmental justice element development. So now let me walk you through um through the environmental justice element, what it is and why cities uh implement, develop and implement that, and what are the elements of those, of that element. Next slide, please. Thank you. So environmental justice element uh is a plan that will identify underserved neighborhoods in Imperial City and set policies and programs to address inequalities caused by environmental burdens. SB one thousand requires that both cities and counties that have disadvantaged communities incorporate environmental justice policies in their general plans. The environmental justice element will focus on improving overall community health through broad citywide policies that focus on health, equity, and removing barriers to healthy living. Next slide, please. What you see on the next slide is the screening tool that helps to identify disadvantaged communities. The Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation recommends overlaying several data data points to map disadvantaged community areas, and those data points are represented by the squares on your screen. Areas with cullen virus strain pollution burden of seventy-five percent and higher. Areas with household median income by census tract at or below state median income. Areas with household median income by census tract at at or below the Department of Housing and Community Development's state income level. In addition to those three data sets, uh, there is also analysis and incorporation of local data sets as well as analysis uh of additional pollution burdens and health risk factors, not only identified through examining data sets, but also by talking to the community. And by wearing all these different uh data points and data sets uh through this exercise, that's how communities identify areas, neighborhoods, uh, where disadvantaged communities live. So this is a little bit about environmental justice, uh, what it hopes to accomplish and how do we identify disadvantaged communities. And now let me walk you through what environmental justice element is actually seeking to do. So besides, next slide, please. So besides identifying underserved areas, the environmental justice element sets policies and programs to address inequalities caused by environmental burdens. Specifically, the environmental justice element will reduce pollution exposure and improve air quality, will promote safe homes, public facilities, food access, physical activities, and civic engagement in public decision-making process. Environmental justice element seeks to prioritize improvements and programs that address the needs of disadvantaged communities and reduce any additional unique compound, unique or compounded health risks. So it's a very ambitious element with the overall overarching goal of uh improving community health by implementing different programs and policies that cover cover the areas that you see on the screen that I just went over. Next slide, please. All right, so how are we gonna get it? How are we gonna get there? How are we gonna approach the development of the environmental justice element? What you see on the next slide is um a number of documents that Ascent will be working on to get us to the final point of final environmental justice element. So Ascent is starting with existing conditions and and background research. This this document will summarize data and local knowledge to identify disadvantaged communities. It will also summarize health conditions with a specific focus on on those disadvantaged communities. Next is gonna be environmental justice outline and policy framework. This document will determine important components, policies, actions, and implementation programs to guide decision-making prior to preparing the administrative environmental justice draft element. The environmental justice element itself will identify disadvantaged communities, as I mentioned before, and also will set, will contain uh goals, policies, and programs to address factors influencing health outcomes of the communities. So and as I mentioned before, Ascent, uh, our consultant, will be leading this process. Next slide, please. Public engagement is gonna be an important part of the environmental justice element development, and that's something that me and my colleagues at the Institute for Local Government in partnership with the City of Imperial will be leading. What we're hoping to do with the public engagement process, our goal is to gather input from residents and stakeholders about their priorities, concerns, lived experiences, as they're related to health, quality of life, and impacts of pollution burdens. We're also gonna learn about health and environmental justice strategies that residents find most relevant and effective. As you can see on the screen, we're proposing a few uh, a few public engagement tactics, including community survey, to hear about priorities and lived experiences, and help to prioritize those future environmental justice policies, strategies, and programs. We're gonna be talking one-on-one with community members to peel, to peel those layers a little bit deeper and have those one-on-one conversations. We're hoping to table at community events and have a few workshops. And also, we we are recruiting advisory committee, a group of residents that will meet monthly and really help us to ensure that um priorities, lived experiences of residents of Imperials are reflected and addressed in the environmental justice documents. And of course, through this public engagement process, we will be educating community not only about what environmental justice element is and what wise it's important, but also the the role that the city plays in developing and implementing those programs for the community. Next slide, I have just a few more slides for you. Just wanna spend another minute talking about the advisory committee and give you a little bit more background about like the visioning for this process. So as I mentioned, a little bit advisory committee is gonna be advising on public engagement and outreach. It will help to ensure that concerns and priorities of Imperial residents are reflected in the draft and final environmental justice element. It's gonna be reviewing the actual drafts and environmental justice element in addition to public comment period. Uh, they need to meet with, committee will meet monthly in the evening, and we'll, we'll ask what's the best date to meet uh at the first meeting. So committee will help us to identify those dates. And we're proposing hybrid format to accommodate folks who may not be in person, who can join us online, and if Spanish-speaking participants will sign up, uh, we will be providing simultaneous uh Spanish translation. In terms of representation, not only for the advisory committee, but also for engagement overall, the groups that we're targeting are youth groups, eighteen to twenty-four, and potentially younger, working families, who usually don't traditionally participate in public engagement processes, businesses, uh, Spanish-speaking residents, seniors, uh, again, residents who don't traditionally participate in those processes, so we're hoping to reach them through those one-on-one interviews, through the surveys. Definitely, the goal is to broaden part, public participation and and adhere from the residents representing various groups in the community. So this is a little bit about advisory committee, what it's gonna do and when it's gonna meet and how. On the next slide, you're gonna see the timeline. Right now, in August and September, Ascent, if you can go to the next slide, please. Right now, Ascent is working on existing conditions, uh, research and report, and Institute for Local Government is developing outreach materials, website language, committee recruitment materials, and we're also translating all that in Spanish. In September, we're gonna be launching the first survey, which is currently also developing. We hopefully, we're gonna have a first uh monthly advisory committee meeting. That's the plan for September. As we move forward with the process, during the fall, we're gonna be work, Ascent will be working on outline and policy framework, and we will be having a round of interviews uh with community members and potentially identifying some community events where we table or host a community workshop. As Ascent is working through the policy frameworks and draft environmental justice elements, we're gonna be launching the second survey, asking communities to help us prioritize uh policy areas, uh, environmental justice policy areas that are most important to them. It's a round of follow-up interviews and uh more pub, additional public workshops, and the public comments for community when uh draft environmental justice element will be posted for public comments and reviews. And this process will wrap up with the final environmental justice element, public comments, final committee meetings, and this timeline might shift a little bit because we're highly aware that we are at holiday times, that's gonna be harder to reach those folks. So we might shift timeline just a little bit to accommodate, to make sure public engagement um process is um has time, there's time for the residents to participate. So this is our timeline. And on the next slide, this is my last slide, I I outline the next steps uh for for this committee, just just so you know what we're doing next, and I kinda mentioned it already. So we're working on existing conditions reports and requesting data from the city that they've been very kindly providing. Uh, website, outreach materials, and translations are also webpage, are also happening right now as in this and next week's. Committee recruitment is gonna start in the next few weeks, as soon as materials are translated in Spanish, as well as uh social media outreach. And we're working on the survey design and translation, and we're hoping that committee will help us to tweak um that survey as well, to make sure it's uh community-friendly. So this is my presentation about environmental justice element, what it is, why we're involved, and what we're planning to do, as well as public engagement strategy, and what we're hoping to achieve with public engagement. With that, I'm gonna turn it, turn it to you to see if you have any follow-up questions or if there's anything else I can share. And hopefully, there's opportunity to take this slide down so you can see the face behind the voice.
Thank you so much for your presentation and all that information. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you, Hannah, we really appreciate your time and all the information you provided to us tonight.
Great, thank you so much, and I look forward to collaborating with uh Austin and Yvonne and the city, and have a good process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
So we'll move on to item uh, letter E, Public Hearing Discussion Acton Recommend/Deny. D one, subject, Public Hearing Discussion Acton for Variance twenty-five dash oh-two for Carlos A. Felix Seguchi to allow the deviation of our residential zone property development standards for front yard setback requirement for any accessory structure located at six forty-two Costo Joel Street, APN zero-six-four-two-seven-one-zero-zero-six. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section one-five-three-oh-three, class three E, new construction or conversion of small structures. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at six forty-nine. Um, and our staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Seguchi is seeking approval for variance twenty-five dash zero-two to deviate from the City of Imperial's property development standards regarding front yard setback measurements. He installed a self-top pergola in his front yard, annoyingly violating the front yard setback requirement of twenty feet from the property line.
As shown in photos provided in the staff report, the applicant has invested time and money into making his home as aesthetically pleasing, and the project is well-supported by his neighbors. Uh, before you, he provided a list of neighbors that um are in support of his project. He went around his neighborhood and um got signatures, and he provided that for you. Um, also, I provided a copy of our variance ordinance. And the first section, under, first paragraph, under purposes and authorization, states, quote, "Variances from the terms of the zoning ordinance shall be granted only when, because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. The strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity or under zoning classification." "Any variance granted shall be subject to such conditions and will assure that the deviation thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property is situated." "Our DRC reviewed the project and determined it does not meet the variance-finding requirements um for special circumstances related to size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, nor does it involve the deprivation of any privileges granted to other properties." "The city is responsible for supporting safe, consistent, and compatible neighborhood development that aligns with our zoning ordinances, but because our zoning ordinance does not provide a legal basis to recommend variance approval, in this case, staff is not recommending reapproval and emphasizes that granting this privilege would be inconsistent with the limitations placed on other residential properties, potentially setting a precedent and creating cumulative impact while also undermining the city's established development standards." Mr. Seguchi is here, present, um, and he has prepared a presentation to present his case.
Okay, great, come on up. Go ahead and step up to the microphone and you know your name, but please prepare, stay in for the record, please.
Can you, can you guys hear me here? Is that good? My name is Carlos Kio Felix Seguchi Garcia, and I'm a resident of sixty-six four-two Costa Sula Street in Imperial, California. Um, first of all, I want to thank the planning team for taking the time to review my uh variance request, and also pleased to meet the Commissioner here. Um, you, as Yvonne mentioned, uh, she was able to distribute the signatures for her neighbors. This represents about eighty percent of the block that is supporting this uh, this uh project. Uh, there were four houses that weren't able to support this uh project, were not uh available. We weren't able to to talk to them, but um, if anything, this project has allowed, allowed me and my wife to meet everybody in the block, so that's great news. So we're, we're doing well. Um, as Yvonne mentioned, this.
Just in a quick summary, we're requesting the City of Imperial approval of variance to allow the construction of the smaller hill, which we already built. Um, oops, um, um, which is uh deviating from the standard for the front yard setback, twenty feet, to seven point five. Um, I just wanna restate, pergola is open, so has no walls. It has a flexible uh roof. Instead of a clock, and we remove and are enclosed, so it's, it shouldn't be a problem. And this was designed with the intent to blend with the house, not to be too much for the neighbors to, you know, be upset about it. So it definitely won't be an issue in terms of visibility, and uh was built to avoid any safety issues. Um, we're applying for variance, and I know that um, Yvonne's reporting that, I think that's very clear. Um, for, in our case, our, our, our opinion is that our yard space is limited just to the, due, due to its shape, and I'll show a picture, image, and in a few seconds here. Um, we do have trees in front of the house, they're beautiful trees that have been there for a while, and obviously supporting the environment, we don't wanna take anything down, and also it's very expensive to do so. We wanna be able to maximize the, the front yard use and and space. Um, we did redo, we redid our front yard into a landscape that's desertic, uh, that's in hopes to save water, conserve water for, uh, for the city and for the world in reality. Um, this pergola is purely decorative and small and is consistent with neighborhood character, in our opinion, and uh it will enhance property experience and have no negative impact or affect the neighbors. Um, my images here are showing pictures of the finished product. Um, fortunately, I don't have a drone to have nice pictures that you guys still, which appreciate, that's good to have, handy there. Um, and I'm not gonna go over the parts, you guys already know that, um, for its own, for one, and all that good stuff. As I mentioned, our house and it's back, part of the backyard is a hill shape back here, so think the, it's a little bit inconvenient to have a pergola there to enjoy necessarily, and we wanted to maximize the front yard space, you see, there's some big trees there. And we're looking from the pergola, from the sidewalk around twelve, thirteen feet, which is standing from the property line seven and a half. Um, over percent of the lot. Uh, and then, again, we're trying to maximize the use and space in front yard. Uh, the reason of the setback regulation in California is basically enabling safety and emergency access, which we think that based on the fact that it's an open pergola and has no walls, nor permanent roof, there shouldn't be an issue for access. Uh, we understand that, uh, we wanna have a neighborhood, uh, uniformity and aesthetics, so we're, we've been a natural in the design to make sure that it blends nicely with the neighborhood. Um, it's open, so we shouldn't have any issues of visibility. We allow natural ventilation through houses, so there's no, no risk of fire uh or anything like that happening, um, and then it allows for landscaping. Um, and we're, I'm not aware of any um like future planning of extending the, the roads, so I don't think that's gonna get into that, that part. It shouldn't be affecting any, any portion of the zoning and future planning for, for the roads there. Um, I'm gonna just into the, aligning to the plan, to the general plan, just because it's some plant information, but in a summary, our pergola does not obstruct any pedestrian and/or privacy that respects the function of the street. We're not blocking certain vehicles or individuals from walking the sidewalk. Uh, we're trying to improve the look of the neighborhood, so I think we did a good job. All the neighbors said they were jealous of pergola and the new yard, so I'm assuming that's a good, good thing for the neighborhood. Um, and then, and a lot of neighbors, uh, wanted to come and check it out and sit there for a little bit, so that's nice. So it fosters inviting front yard. Uh, they really did met, uh, Commissioner Ascent the other day, so she went to invite there, so that's nice. And then, again, we reflect coordinated design principles, which align with the circulation element of the, their plan. In terms of housing, it's for suitable neighborhoods, obviously in summer it's a bit tough to be out there, but when it's nice, it will be nice to be able to sit there and, and talk to our neighbors. We, we do that on holidays, like Halloween, for July. So it will be nice to have that community interaction, so it's already, it's already working. Um, uh, um, again, it attracts, it's a, we think it's a thoughtful design. Uh, it's a low-impact structure that fits the neighborhood, and if it was a pleasant well-being, we invite our neighbors to come and relax and read a book or whatever they want to do there in the future. We, we don't have a problem with that. Uh, and it also shows community support, we were able to talk to our neighbors, and they were happy for us. Um, for a while, we kinda stopped kinda taking care of the front yard because, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing to do, so that's why we decided to build a, a different landscape and requires less maintenance. And we just wanted to add that element to allow us to enjoy the garden for us and any guests. Uh, in terms of the land use, it, uh, we believe supports tightly environmental design and the workman's honor of community, and enhances visual quality and promotes functional outdoor living, and it respects safety and sidelines. And also preserves and strengthens neighborhood character. Um, I wanted to add, of, of the price that I was able to find in the webpage of the city, uh, those are certainly not the same, they're different properties, I wanna make that clear. Uh, they have different zoning in the first case, uh, and I just, uh, wanted to point out that some of them were approved and they're certainly not following, following the setback regulations. Certainly not following the setback regulations, and some of them are commercial, most of them are residential, and there's different things. Um where you see the call observation into code, I'm I'm just putting a note, this that's the the conclusion, some of them are under twelve. They moved from ten feet to nine feet and twenty inch, and in another case, five feet to zero, uh ten feet to five, five to two. And I'm putting a percentage there to code. And I'm just, and in the full setback, I'm just showing which setback is the one that is impacted for uh for this uh variation. So that's just kind of provided a little context, uh that this is not a new thing, but it's also. Not exactly done for this purpose. Um so I just wanted to point that out to the to the the commission team. And this is an outdated slide, and I think it's my last slide, this is episode eighty seven. We were like five signatures to that date. Uh you should have a copy of the signatures and I can pass it down, this which shows that we had about sixteen signatures out of the twenty. And the block, that's about eight percent of support, and then as I mentioned, there are four houses that are. And we wish you could think that the project is a an addition to the neighborhood field, um. Safe use.
And it's just something nice to have. We hope that the neighborhood will enjoy it ourselves, too. So we're seeking your approval, guys.
Thank you very much for that. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Seguchi?
I don't have any questions.
I have a couple, I'll go ahead and start. Do you have any questions for him that you'd like to add? Okay, I just had a couple for you. Uh do you have a rear patio or there's no patio at all, no no shade in the back at all, no cover or anything?
Um we have a section that is covered, that is a deck that comes from the main main room. We do have a a little section there, yes.
Okay, so you do have some shaded area in the rear of the house?
We do, yeah.
Okay, and then um. Did you build it yourself or did you have somebody build it for you?
No, I did it myself. Actually, uh when I was building it, one of the neighbors was nice enough to help me put it up together, so. Yeah, I did it myself.
So the cement and everything, you did yourself?
No, that was done. Yeah, so it was done, yeah, it was.
Was it a contract landscaper or just, do you know if he had a license to do that? The cement, especially the cement area, do you know if he had a license to do the cementing area?
Remember.
I don't remember, but I think so.
Okay, okay. Um I was just wondering if maybe he was aware of the setbacks, is why I was asking if he was licensed.
You know what, when we talked to our uh the person who did the yard, uh he ensures assures that there there were no, there wouldn't be any issues just because of the size of the pergola. I think that was the 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 area that was covering, but not necessarily the setbacks.
And maybe he wasn't aware, was he aware that you were going to be putting a structure on it? He was aware that you're putting a structure, okay, because if there wasn't a structure, then there might not be the issue with the setbacks, but since there's a structure on there. But he was aware that you're putting it, okay. Um let me see if there was, I think there was maybe one or two more questions. I think that was all that I had. Did you have anything else?
So I did get a chance, thank you for your presentation. Um it was very nice to be able to visually see um the structure as well as your backyard. I can see the restrictions you might face as a homeowner in the backyard with the L shape, but do you know the square footage in your backyard?
Remember, it's over my head here, let's see if I put it here. Um let me see if I can get this out of the way, okay. I didn't measure, I didn't put the measure here at the top, like a quick calculation here. Hmm I don't have it at the top of my head.
Hey, I wonder if if you can even just describe maybe from your house to the fence, how about how many feet that is, or Yvonne, if you know?
From my house to which fence?
To the back fence, yeah, I think that's. If you were to walk.
Eight, nine, maybe? So that the cement part is about four? So it's about, yeah, maybe like ten? It's like about half of that part of the grass.
And I did, I wanted to thank you, we did meet yesterday, I went by and and talked to him for just a second. Did you think, I was, it's a ten by twelve, is that correct?
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten?
Yes.
Is there enough room between your house and it looks like the north, between the north side of where it is now? And to your house, is there enough room to put something just like that right there?
Uh maybe, I I mean, if the trees are trimmed and. It will be tight, it would potentially get in get into the the structure, but. Yeah, it could have done, been been done a little uh.
Closer to the house, okay. Okay. Okay, hold on, just a second, one person at a time, please. Okay, and if you want, after he's finished, I'm gonna let anybody else that's there that would like to speak and come up and speak. Um yeah, okay, so there is possibly enough room in the back for them to go, I mean, but to the north side of it to to put something just like that there?
I'm not sure if entirely, but you know, so maybe you could be move move the structure over there, yeah.
Okay.
Or planned it that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Felix?
I just want to thank you, I mean, obviously you did your homework and and I can't speak for the other ish um setbacks that. Are within the setbacks, like, because I really don't know the history and why those other setbacks got approved. Even with the variance, so to to go back and say, hey, well, these guys got a got got approved. I don't know the history of Florida, I can't really speak for that. Um but overall, I I appreciate your the homework you you put into, I mean, we're really passionate as homeowners. As far as what we want to do to our homes, uh I I do the same thing with our homes, but. Um a- and then we were assigned to this position, it's sometimes it's just. It's just decisions that we have to make, you know, it's the best interest for you as a homeowner, the best interest for the residents, the best interest for the City of Imperial. Um and I'm 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 kind of in a mix on this, too, because, again, I'm a property owner myself. I I would hate to put the money into something that it's not um. Not within the within within code or or whatever the case may be. Um but I just want to thank you for for putting the effort and and and, you know, the homework that you put into it. And I was gonna ask the same thing with Lisa had just mentioned, is there room to where you guys can possibly push that pergola out? You know, I understand that that you guys want to hang out more in the front yard and be within the community, and that's awesome, you know. That's a, that's a great idea, you know, you don't, nobody wants to be, you know. Stuck in your backyard, not have the opportunity to mingle with your neighbors. Uh I completely respect that, but is we also have to, you know, we still have to abide by what setbacks. Whether if it's code or, you know, whatever the case may be, we still have to look at that as well, so.
Was there anything else that you wanted to add, Mr. Felix?
Just think, think that our neighbors. Support and and yeah.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So if there's somebody else that'd like to come up, you just, your name and your address for the record, please, come on up to the microphone so we can hear you.
So uh my name is Virginia Wong, I'm the neighbor, my address is six forty four Costa Soul, so I'm. Right to the, I guess it would be the west side, uh direct neighbor. And so the uh and what I wanted to mention was, they're talking about the size and the spaces available. Their their home, along with mine, and like I think two others down uh going back towards my side on the street. All those homes were built initially as models by uh KB Homes. So the backyards, the backyards are, the space is very, very limited. And along with the way they have the front and everything set up, I think they just built them just so that they can. Use them uh for what the purpose was, the models, so they can sell the other homes, so. Everything is space wise aesthetically, it's it was just panel aesthetics is what they see, but as far as like use and space for them to. Uh have enough space to, like if you, you know, you guys have pets, you know, and it's it's just the way they they have it set up, so. That was just, I wanted to just provide that input, let's see.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else on this matter?
So uh my name is Michelle Villasenor, I'm uh Carlos's wife, I'm at six four two Costa Soul Street as well. Um so I just wanted to also share um about the backyard, it is quite tight. Um we are also backed up to Brewer, so I mean, we have that that the brick, the brick type fence. Um and so it is kind of hard to enjoy our backyard, but we also, when we decided to move back to the Imperial Valley. One of the first things that we noticed about our neighborhood was that everyone's very united, I mean, kids play basketball in the street. Um everybody's out, everybody says hi to each other, and that's something that we didn't have when we lived um in a different state. And so that was really nice, and so um when we first moved up here, we noticed our front yard was really, really uh big, but it was a model home. So it had a lot of things that needed to be, like, there was landscaping that had been kind of let go. And so it did take us a while, three years to save up, um landscape our house and make sure that it looked nice, and our neighbors were so patient with us, because. I mean, it was, it was a rough uh rough front yard for a while. Um but so we're kind of happy that we can kind of share that with our neighbors, so just so that you guys also um know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other discussion for us?
I don't know.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at seven ten. So no further discussion, does anybody have a motion or?
Is there anything? For me to say, but was there anything else from staff?
Is there anything else from staff that you guys would like to add after all the comments?
I don't know, everything's basically provided in the staff report.
Okay.
I I also just want to point out, yeah, um our city manager is not here and our city manager's office is being represented by. Um Mr. Garcia, but he he does have an air, a home in the area, so he hasn't participated in any way due to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, the city manager.
Yeah, Dennis Moreno.
Yep, perfect. So what do you guys think? Am I allowed to make a motion?
Absolutely.
Does anybody have a motion that they'd like to make or?
Yeah, this was a tough one. I mean, overall, I mean. We we have our variances and as Yvonne shared that, you know, they don't meet. The, you know, the the variances. It it just, it's just. And and the 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 problem is, I mean, it's not the problem that I have, it's just, I I just hate for people. Um the residents, you know, spend money and and for something that they want to beautify their home and and be active with the community. Uh and again, I respect that um a lot. But again, there's there's rules of why rules are made, why the codes are made. Whether if it's an open structure or not, there's still rules that we have to follow, unfortunately. But we gotta stand behind what what the City of Imperial, you know. The City of Imperial's rules, right? Um again, I'm I'm, I have mixed emotions on that, but again, we do have to follow rules at the same time. They're set in place for a reason, whether if it's state, county, whatever the case may be, they're set for a reason. Um unfortunately, I would like to make a motion to deny the resolution. Of PC two zero two five dash eleven, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Imperial. Denying the variance twenty five zero two. From allowing the deviation of the residential zone property development standards for the front yard. Setback requirements for the accessory structure located at. Force six four two Costa Soul Street, APN zero six two seven one dash zero zero six.
So let me just be clear, yeah, yeah, so so because it's written as a denial, it would be approving the denial, right? Or adopting the resolution written as a denial, I just want to make sure everyone's clear, yeah. It's a little backwards for me.
So yes, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, before before we, because we will be building, but um I I do want to say one thing, one is, this is pretty hard. Not only because it's my first meeting, but but because I see the heart that you're placing within your community. And the only thing I want to encourage you is is to continue to do that. Um it it takes a lot of money, time to beautify your home. But I can tell you that regardless of what decision comes out of this, if you continue to have that open heart towards your neighbors. Whether it's pushed back, whether it goes in the backyard, whether you just push it a few feet. As long as you continue to open your hearts and your home to your neighborhood, that's not gonna change. So thank you for being a great part of the of the community here in Imperial, and you know, if if you're, you have the support of. Of your neighbors, it's really just because of that, because of who you are and not so much the structure that you've built, so thank you for that.
Do I have a second? I will go ahead and second the motion for recommend recommendation for denial of the variance, everything that he said on that. And I'd like to call for a vote.
Motion carries three zero.
So just to kind of let you know, too, this is a recommend recommendation for denial, so it goes before the city council, correct?
This would be um final, but they do have the opportunity to appeal, so the the department will work with you on that. So this would be final if it's not appealed to the council.
I I think will be covered on, well, it's additional cost because we have to notice it again, uh but I think. Uh we will have to take a look at the deposit that you uh you pay. Um see if there's any additional fees, but I think you should be, you should be okay within that deposit. It goes, yeah, with it goes into an account and then we draw monies out of that to pay for the public hearing, the mailouts and and staff. Time, so we'll let you know where we at on that.
And thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to our reports. Do we have any commissioners' reports for this evening?
I don't have anything.
Say no? I'm trying to think, do I, I don't, I don't think I have anything to say either. So we'll move on to staff reports, is there anything you guys like to add this tonight?
Um just be be aware, there was still a lot of construction going on and SR eighty six, this is almost, you know, like the last stretch. We completed uh most of our left turn lanes north of Berione, so we're working on the south side of Berione. Um give us another, you know, about a about a week, we'll complete that, and then in the next couple of weeks, we'll be placing the landscaping. And and the striping all over Berione and SR eighty six, so just bear with us.
It's looking good.
It is.
Looking better.
Yes, with Hannah's presentation, um our hopes were to recruit some of you or any people that you may know. And s- any members of the community that would help us.
But yeah, once you know the day of the week, let us know and we can reach out to people that we know or maybe if it's in our schedule.
So we're compiling, we're starting to compile a list of interested people. And so if you have any suggestions, please do contact me or just send me an email.
There was something of Parks and Rec, then weren't they having a board, like a meeting for Parks and Rec, I think that's what it was? Friends of Parks.
But they do, it's on Wednesdays also, right?
No, um it's on the fourth, the four, yeah, the fourth Wednesday of every month.
Oh, because because I haven't seen any, okay.
And and since they're a nonprofit, it's a little bit outside of ours, but it's completely tied um to our our parks. So um his department will be able to help help guide people, but it's not the typical Brown Act and not necessarily done at at a certain location.
Mr. Garcia?
Uh just on behalf of the city manager, Dennis Murray, once again, um saying congratulations and welcome to the team. And looking forward to work working with you and with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okey dokey, so I guess we get to adjourn. So G one, we're gonna adjourn to the next Planning Commission meeting regularly scheduled for August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at six thirty. We're gonna adjourn at seven nineteen.